Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 24, 2025 meeting of the Stillwater City Council. This time I will call the meeting into order and ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Driving over here thinking we should postpone this meeting because it's so beautiful outside, but thank you all for joining us anyway. Councillors, questions, comments, action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve consent, please vote. Consent docket is approved with a vote of five to zero. Next up, we have public hearings. Item 6A tonight is received public comment regarding a request from Stillwater Star West LLC for a map amendment to rezone property addressed as 5599 West Sixth Avenue, also referred to as 5499 West Sixth Avenue, from RTM and Commercial General to RTM multifamily District, CC-25-33. Did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, we do.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I am Josh Brown. I'm the project manager with Development Services. As stated, this is a map amendment to rezone 5599 West Sixth Avenue, also known as 5499 West Sixth Avenue, from, let's see here, yes, a portion of, from CG or Commercial General to two-family and multifamily residential. So here's an area map and showing its location along West Sixth. That red line kind of toward the top is the city limits boundary. Here's an aerial view with the Crosswind subdivision located directly to the south, Country Club Basin subdivision to the southeast, and O'Reilly Auto Parts located directly to the north. There is a private access easement, and that is how this lot currently has access from West Sixth Avenue. Here is a view from West Sixth Avenue. The subject site is in the back, kind of along that tree line, and is vacant and undeveloped currently. This is a zoning map. As you can see, the lot currently has two zoning districts, Commercial, General in the pinkish-red shade, and the two-family, multifamily residential in gold. The applicant wishes to bring the entire zoning for this lot to the residential, two-family and multifamily. This is the future land use map. This was adopted with our current comprehensive plan and is used to predict desired land uses. The comprehensive plan, in this case, calls for commercial uses at this site. And, let's see, Mr. Aaron Ferguson is here, is the applicant's engineer, and is here to answer any questions you may have. Do you have any questions for staff?
Councillors, any questions for staff?
I noted in the prior minutes from the Planning Commission, there was a lot of discussion about access and the shared access with O'Reilly's that O'Reilly's owns, and that, the way the minutes read was, we're pretty sure everything's okay, but are we really sure everything's okay?
Yes, they have submitted the actual access easement, and that has been reviewed by city staff.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you. This time I will open the public hearing. We do have a representative of the applicant here.
Yes, thank you. I'm Dawn Williams, and I'm representing the Stillwater Star West. To give you a little bit of history on this, we purchased the property in 2004, and it started out as a 10-acre site less where the VFW is, and the VFW is a 200 by 300-foot space out of that. And then in 2011, we were working with a developer who was going to build some apartments, and so we came in and rezoned the back 180 feet of that property to be able to put apartments on. And so if you look, you know, if the site right now has 180 feet of multifamily on the very south end of it or the back end of it, and then in front of that then was a commercial. And in 2017 then, we sold the 250-foot depth of that to O'Reilly's. And when we sold the 250-foot depth to O'Reilly's, that left a gap, still zone commercial, between O'Reilly's and the apartment land or R3 land back behind there. Now, what we are planning to do with the property now, though, is we're going to rezon to duplexes, and the big reason for that is, you talked about the access easement earlier, and we're going to use single-story duplexes, which is a lot less dense than an R3 or an apartment. And in order to utilize the land for the best we can, we really need to rezone this section of it to be able to have a five-acre tract instead of a two-acre tract. So, and I'd be glad to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, sir. Councillors, any questions?
Does this part of Crosswinds, the part that's right adjacent to the Crosswinds, isn't, are there duplexes right there along the road? The first set of housing right in Crosswinds, is that duplexes as well?
This is, yeah, you actually can't get there from Crosswinds. You come in off of Sixth Street at the same entrance that is there for O'Reilly's, and you go through, actually go through their parking lot to access the land. And it's 250 feet, this land that we're talking about, it's 250 feet south of Sixth Street. So I don't know whether that answers your question or not.
No, I was just wondering if the adjacent...
It'll back up to existing housing?
Existing housing in Crosswinds.
It backs up, there are some duplexes that are in, in Crosswinds that they back up to.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Further questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I don't have anyone else signed up to speak on this item. Was anyone here expecting to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask for the Planning Commission's recommendation on the item.
The Planning Commission recommended approval with a vote of four to zero with one abstention.
Thank you. Councillors?
I approve the Planning Commission recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Planning Commission's recommendation, please vote. That item's approved with a vote of five to zero. Item 6B is received public comment regarding a request from Hall Hale Properties LLC for specific use permit to allow vehicle and equipment services, sales and service on a portion of property addressed at 1600 North Perkins Road in the Commercial Shopping District, CC-25-34. Did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, we do.
Mr. Brown?
Okay, yes, this is a specific use permit request at 1600 North Perkins Road to allow vehicle and equipment sales and services in Commercial Shopping Zoning District. This is an area map of the property showing its frontage along North Perkins Road. Here's an aerial view. It does share a lot with Lowe's, and it is located directly to the north of Cimarron This is the proposed site plan that was submitted with this. They are, the plan is to take access from the Lowe's parking lot and not do any new cuts on Perkins Road. Here's a street view from Perkins Road. It is currently vacant, and as you can see, there's a wooden privacy fence currently there between the Cimarron Townhomes and the subject site. The Planning Commission did recommend approval with the condition that they build an eight-foot masonry wall to help kind of act as a noise buffer, because going back to the proposed site plan here, the bays do face to the south, which is towards Cimarron Townhomes. Here's a zoning map, and Commercial Shopping zoning is located to the west, to the north, to the east, with two-family and multifamily residential directly to the south, and multifamily intermediate to the southeast across Perkins Road. Here's the future land use map again, and the comprehensive plan for this area calls for commercial uses. Mr. Juan Vasquez is the project engineer, or the applicant's engineer, and he is here to answer any questions you may have. Do you have any questions for staff?
Councillors, any questions?
The eight-foot wall, I noticed within the Planning Commission notes, there was some concern from the president of the Homeowners Association for the Townhouses. Will that wall, did that accommodate their concerns, or?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. This time I'll open the public hearing. If we have a representative of the applicant, go first.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Juan Vasquez. I'm the engineer for Discount Tire Company. Discount Tire Company, if you don't know, they're a national firm, 1,100 stores throughout the country, probably about 20 here in Oklahoma, three in Tulsa. We did, you know, meet here at Plan Commission last month, and we did discuss with the homeowners association, so we're okay providing the eight-foot high masonry fence to try and mitigate some of the potential sound coming from the building. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Was there a discussion about facing it the other way?
It's Lowe's, it's Lowe's. So what Lowe's does, you know, throughout the country, they'll offer pieces of property for sale for small restaurants or other uses, and so they approach Discount Tire. But if we locate it face south, because we face it the other way, then our traffic would compete with Lowe's' traffic. And so we're trying to avoid that so that our traffic's internal to our site. If you did it the other way, our traffic would be along the Lowe's driveway.
My understanding was there won't be a separate curb cut off of Perkins for this?
That is correct.
So wouldn't the traffic be coming through the Lowe's parking lot anyway?
It is, but it's coming off of the side.
Okay.
It won't be at the front, it won't be at the front of the building.
I see. And so that, what you're saying, though, is that that's one of their stipulations?
Yes, one of their stipulations, yes, sir.
Understood.
So your bays are just one door? It's not drive-through, it's in and out, the same?
Yes, pull in and pull out. There's three, there's six bays, two bays per door.
Okay.
And all we do is tires and wheels, that's it.
I think part of the conversation in Plan Commission, too, was the hours of the business. It's not open early or late?
Nope, we open at eight, close at six, close on Sunday.
Okay, and that's for every store everywhere?
Every store, yes, sir. And there's no drop-offs, there's no early bird, you can't drop your car off in the morning, there's no leaving your car at night, you got to come pick it up. If not, it'll be locked inside the store. You got to come get it the next day.
Okay. And six days a week, right? Or seven?
Six days a week, yeah. Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:30. And they do, since COVID, they've run to more of an appointment model, so you can download their app and get an appointment so that you get in, you get out quickly, so you're not there waiting in the waiting room.
Further questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I don't have anyone else signed up to speak on this item. Was there anyone here planning to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Could you remind us the Plan Commission's recommendations?
Yes, again, the Planning Commission recommended approval with a vote of five to zero with the condition that an eight-foot masonry wall is built between the Cimarron Townhomes and this project site.
Thank you. That's my understanding, if we were to approve the Plan Commission's recommendations, we would need the motion to include the reasons why we would want to keep the Plan Commission's conditions in, if that's what the motion would be, just so you know. Councillors, further comments, questions, or a motion on the item?
Motion to approve Planning Commission's recommendation with the inclusion of the masonry wall to mitigate for noise to the residential structures to the south.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the item with the condition, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Plan Commission's recommendations are approved. Item 6C, received public comment regarding a request from the Independent School District Number 16 and Bank SNB for closing a portion of the right-of-way of property located at 5021 North Perkins Road, more particularly described as a portion of North Gate Drive and North Benjamin Street, two and along Lot 4 of North Gate Commercial Area, first section, CC-25-35. Did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, we do.
Mr. Brown?
All right. This is a closing request from the Independent School District Number 16 to close a portion of the right-of-way located at 5021 North Perkins Road. On this area map, you can see it is on the northeast corner of North Perkins Road and East Richmond Road, and highlighted in the magenta, there is the portion of the right-of-way that they wish to close. This is an aerial view of the site, and this is the current location for the Stillwater Public Schools' operation of Educational Services Building. This is a zoning map. There are currently five different zoning districts located on this property, with the island out front along Perkins, zoned to ag. Light industrial makes up most of it, and there is a small lot, single-family, to the north, and then going down the east and to the south, there's office, two-family, multifamily residential, and Commercial General. General industrial is located to the south, and single-family, small lot, single-family residential to the north, ag to the east. This is a street view along East Richmond Road. This is looking at the, roughly looking at the portion of the right-of-way to be closed. It is currently undeveloped. This is an exhibit that was submitted with this request. It is the portion of the right-of-way that the applicant wishes closes in the black hatch pattern. This was originally platted to be a continuation of North Benjamin Street, however, North Benjamin Street never made it that far north. And so the applicant wishes to close this to allow for future development on that lot, if so desired. The applicant's engineer, Mr. Stephen Ghost, is here to speak on this item. Are there any questions for staff?
Were you going to clean up that zoning at some point?
They originally did, but deemed it not necessary at this time, so maybe in the future.
Any further questions? Thank you, sir. This time I'll open the public hearing. We'll invite Mr. Ghost to speak on behalf of the applicant.
Good evening, Mayor and Councillors. Stephen Ghost with Ghost and Associates here on behalf of the school district. Josh pretty well covered everything. This was platted, the streets and the areas south of it were platted, the areas to the north and the east were not, they're unplatted, and so this is just trying to clean that up. They're currently planning on putting the bus facility that's down at Lincoln Academy up here, and so it fits to the earlier question about the zoning within the aisle zoning as an allowed use, so. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Ghost?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
I don't have anyone else sign up to speak. Were you expecting to speak on the item, sir?
Can I?
We'll need you to fill out a form, but go ahead and come on up.
I'm thankful that the road is being closed.
If you could just introduce yourself with your name and address, please.
Mike Siegfried, at 720 East North Gate Drive. I'm one of the houses across the street from the property. There's another house next to me that ends the road. My question is, because there is already construction and dirt, earth moving right now, is they're going up and down the road in front of my house. So if we're closing the road, I would assume there would be no more traffic across that pathway, right? I mean, that's my question, because the road right now is getting extremely dirty from the traffic and the trucks and the bulldozers coming through there. So that's only my concern, is what's that going to look like down in the future if that is going to be buses parked somewhere on that property, right? How is that going to be accessed from where and what point?
Which road are you referring to? Richmond?
North Gate. Richmond is the one south of me.
Okay.
So I'm the road where that starts at North Gate, right about here, and it goes across.
Well, I'm not sure we can answer that question at this point in the hearing. It's probably best addressed with the school district or with Mr. Ghost outside of the hearing. I don't know that it particularly pertains to whether we would close the easement or not, but if you want to respond, that would be fine, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So here's the current plan that's being permitted. We've put a T-turnaround at the end of North Gate to take care of our fire marshal back here, because North Gate's over 150 feet long, so there'll be a T-turnaround, there'll be a gate, and then this is parking for the buses coming south. The plan right now is they will enter off of North Gate and exit onto Richmond, and we've been coordinating that tie-in with the work getting ready to happen on Richmond. And there'll be a gate at the north and south end, and a perimeter fence securing the site.
But I would assume construction of this will involve trucks on North Gate and Richmond at...
Yeah, they've started construction, they have their air change permit approved this afternoon. We got notice that the permit for the construction has been approved.
But the portion that we're talking about closing tonight is not currently being used as a road, correct?
Correct. The current paved road stops, you can't see the cursor very well, but up here...
We're not closing that.
Correct.
We would just be closing where there is a right to build a road, or a plan to build a road around the back end.
That is correct. We're not planning on removing any of the concrete paving that's there.
So to address the previous question, I'm not sure any of this action would affect how construction traffic moves along North Gate.
Well, yeah, and, I mean, they need to be following the rules, and we'll zigzag on them if they're causing trouble, so.
Understood.
Is bus traffic going to be coming now across?
It is after they've run it, so all the buses that are currently down at Lincoln Academy will be housed up here.
Disappointing as a resident in that area.
Yeah, and it's zoned light industrial currently, so this use or something more intense could be there.
Well, again, to the extent that we're considering the closure of this road, it's not easement, what's the word?
Right-of-way.
Right-of-way. I think not particularly, that discussion isn't particularly relevant to that. We couldn't, I don't know, to the extent we have to have, are there further permits or zoning hearings that we'll have on their use of this, or is this, this is all permitted?
Right, as far as we know in our discussions with staff, what's being proposed is permitted by right.
Okay. So I would encourage local residents to continue discussion with the school district about what the plans are there. Anyone else here to speak on this item? Thank you, Mr. Ghost. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Please let us know, was there a Plan Commission recommendation on this?
There was not.
No.
So...
Is there a staff recommendation?
There is, if I can get there. Staff, well, staff recommended closing the right-of-way as presented.
Thank you. Councillors, questions, comments, action on the item?
We are looking for a motion to approve the proposed closing, or a motion to deny the proposed closing, and then the closing is actually done by adoption of an ordinance later on in the agenda.
Understood.
I was ready to make a motion, now I'm confused. What are we looking for?
I would recommend a motion to approve the proposed closing.
I move we approve, approve the proposed closing.
Recommend the...
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the proposed closing, please vote. That item is approved with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to item seven on the agenda, general orders, consider approval of an agreement between Payne County and the City of Stillwater for public safety communications coordination for interoperability. Mr. Rob Hill.
Good evening, Mayor, Councillors.
Hope you got some rest after last week's weather.
Little bit, little bit. The agreement before you this evening is kind of a simple agreement. It outlines that Payne County will, actually, the City of Stillwater will house some of Payne County's radio equipment at our tower site and here at City Hall. This is a mutual agreement. It benefits us as well as Payne County. Benefits us because it allows our tower site to go online as early as the 1st of April, and it benefits Payne County so that as their tower sites come online, following that through August, as they come online, they can turn them up and turn them on and then become useful for those communities. The agreement simply says, and I say simply not to make light of the agreement, but simply says that we're going to house two pieces of equipment at the tower site and one here at City Hall. And by the way, this morning, there was a special session of the Payne County Commissioners where they voted on and approved this agreement, so we have an approved agreement from Payne County for you this evening.
Thank you, Rob. Councillors, any questions?
I just want to comment that I appreciate all the work that Rob and his team and many people on the city staff have gone through, as well as people in the county. This is a huge project for public safety, and it's been many, many, many years in the works, and there's been a lot of activity in the last three years, and I'm glad we're almost there.
So are we.
Further comments or action on the item?
And just to verify, I think I saw this as I was reading through the contract, but I can't find it right now.
Okay.
We, the city is not in any way responsible if there would be any damage to the county equipment. The city is not held liable for any of that.
That is correct. What belongs to the county at the two sites belongs to them holistically. If there's any damage, they're responsible for the repairs and replacements of that equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Just like we would be for ours.
Right, okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
So actually, that brings up one more question.
Yes, sir.
Does the county have ingress and egress to service and access this equipment?
They do, through us. So basically, in the contract, it's a phone call to our office, and then we will provide them reasonable access to the tower site.
Okay.
As needed, while still maintaining the security of the site.
Will there be action on the item?
Motion to approve the agreement between Payne County and the City of Stillwater for public safety communications coordination.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that agreement is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Item 7B is consider approval of several actions related to construction of the new airport terminal, and Candy Staring is here.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councillors. Candy Staring Engineering Department here to discuss with you all tonight the terminal project. This has got a huge team behind it, working, seems like night and day. I have to give huge praise to Kelly Reed, who's got a day job, and then she also has this extra job, so she's been very busy and probably didn't know she was going to be quite this busy when she started this position, but she's building the terminal. Shane Van Usten is in the back. Don't let his back row seat make you think he doesn't want to come answer questions, because he does. So both of them are here, and if you have any questions for either of them, please feel free to ask. The subject of the presentation tonight is on work package three that was recently advertised and open. We've received the proposal from Lippert Brothers and we're ready to recommend to you all contract award by Lippert Brothers and execution of the CMAR Amendment Three, which is for the conversion to guaranteed maximum price for this particular work package. Excuse me. I'm going to pop up some shading to let you, to kind of remind you all in the public what the terminal project is. So the first work package that's already been executed is for the terminal itself and some minor improvements to parking drives, and the yellow that just popped up is roadway, detention, public utilities, and the beacon relocation, and it is work packages two through four, plus some support work. The purple that just popped up is the north parking lot that we are putting off until we have grants for that, and the south parking lot is the same story, putting it off until we have grants to cover it. The design and construction admin fees so far are about 1.5 million, and all of those packages together, plus design and construction, add up to 30 million. The grant funds that we've received so far are 14.4 million on work package one and 3 million on work package three, which is tonight's work package. And then we are planning, Kelly is, to apply for future funds that will help fund both the north parking lot, the south parking lot, and then that top item where it says future, that's the furniture fixtures and equipment, the passenger boarding bridge, and the baggage handling system. That PPB is really PBB. That P-P-B is really P-B-B. So FAA has been very generous to us to help us build the parts that we are building so far, and we certainly hope for continued grants to be able to finish the parts of the project that aren't yet funded. Tonight's work package is work package three, and these two tables are summarizing the cost in two different ways. The top table is summarizing the amounts you'll see in Amendment Three and the line items there by the C-MAR, and the bottom table summarizes them by work component. The roundabout is pulled out. We had a breakout cost for it for a particular reason, and its breakout was 585,452. The total work package is 3,124,479. The roundabout, you'll see in the top right here circled, it's a solution for a three-legged intersection that is Wright Drive, Airport Road, and the industrial access road that already had some traffic incidents in the past. But it also is the solution for northbound Hargus traffic to turn left at the roundabout into the one-way four-lane drop-off at the terminal. On the left side, there's a table that's showing you the work package three that was on the previous slide, plus some other support work. Stillwater Electric has materials and some installation work shown there. IT has a subcontractor that's going to do some fiber line installation and some reroutes for fiber line, and then because ONG is in its own private easement, we have to pay them to relocate their line. And then Olson's got an amendment and some more contingency there, and the total is So to show the, how this will combine with past amendments to total and new guaranteed maximum price, this work package is that 3,124,000 number, and then pre-construction work package one and work package two from the past is the 19 million number, and when we add it all together, our C-MAR guaranteed max price, which is actually a partial because there's still work to do, will be at 22,400,000. So for work packages one, two, three, and four, we anticipate, four is not to you yet, four will be to you in a month, and that completion is August 2026. Questions?
Counselors?
Yeah, I just have one question. In light of all the commotion around federal grants and federal funding of projects, do we have any concerns that the money we're about to authorize is not going to show up?
I don't want to answer that question, but I think we've checked, and I think Kelly has a good answer. A positive affirmative answer, hope.
Good evening. The money that is in this work package that Candy's presented is already in our quote-unquote checking account with the FAA, so it's already been approved by council and encumbered.
All right. Thank you.
That's a big relief.
Do you want to, Kelly, do you want to speculate as to future grant requests? Have you heard anything from FAA about the fact that we're going to come back and ask for more?
There was some discussion and concern that had us concerned. We've spoken with the FAA. The FAA is not concerned at this time. The future grants that we'll be requesting for that furniture fixture equipment, the boarding bridge, and baggage handling are all through our entitlements, which we receive because we have commercial service. So that's money that's allocated to us as a right because of the fees that we charge passengers to fly on those commercial flights. So it's not a highly competitive program like the initial lump sum for the terminal. This is money allocated to us year by year.
And just in case, how much are we talking about on those packages if, for whatever reason?
Our total project total is about 30 million, so we've got around 8 million to go, roughly, for the parking lots and those three additional terminal needs.
Okay.
Will begin grant.
The majority will likely be 90% grant, 10% match, the remainder of the fiscal year, 25 grants needs, and I think 26, is that right, are 5% match. So some of the grants will have less match.
Would like to hear that, as long as they exist when we get there.
We don't know about the future.
Sure. Thank you.
I missed something that's important. On February 13th, we had a special meeting with T-PAC. I didn't talk about this, did I?
No, I was going to bring it up.
Okay, thank you. And they voted four to zero in favor of using transportation sales tax funds for the roundabout because it's a public benefit in more ways than just the terminal program.
So along that line, the roundabout in town has had a lot of discussion in the last week or so since it got run over yet again. Talk to us about the design of this roundabout and how it will be different from what we currently have.
I looked through email, and I think it was Counselor Clark that sent me an email when we first started talking about a roundabout. Do you remember that?
I do recall that, yes.
He said...
I came to meet you in your office, too.
Okay. He said, geez, is it going to be like the other one? And so I took a two-scale drawing and showed the old, the run we have now compared to this, and it's twice as large. This one has twice as much diameter, and it will handle big truck traffic and charter buses and turnarounds, and there's even an apron. If you're coming west on Airport, turning northeast on Wright Drive, there's an apron there that allows for even a wider, bigger trucks than just smaller ones. So we have designed it to handle max size.
And we do have fuel delivery trucks going north to the fuel farm, so it'll handle them also, correct? Okay.
I think it's, we sometimes forget what roundabouts are meant for, and so the traffic calming effect of those can be quite effective, and then also the fact, as Candy mentioned, being able to route folks the right direction. When they work the way they're supposed to, they can be very strong components of our transportation.
Yes. Kelly's already...
I don't dislike roundabouts. I just dislike the one downtown.
Yes. I did note that on the winter days, it was barricaded off so that people wouldn't accidentally hit the horse statue in the middle.
But it's so smart.
I was going to ask if we have a statue picked out for the center of this one?
No, we don't.
No? It's going to be open?
We have one we can put there.
No. Any other questions?
Further questions, Counselors? Do you have a recommendation for us, Candy?
Yes. You probably are worried that I'm going to read that, and I'm not. Staff recommends a motion to approve the items listed in the agenda and here on this slide, which are for the purpose of approving a ward of bids, converting project work package three to a partial guaranteed maximum price, and providing for the additional support work listed on this slide. The only thing I would add is the actions also authorize the city manager to sign the relevant documents.
Counselors, questions, comments, or action on the recommendations?
I move approval of the staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the staff's recommendation. Please vote. Recommendations approved with a vote of five to zero. Takes us to item eight, ordinances on first read. Ordinance 50, excuse me, ordinance 3557, an ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 5599 West Sixth Avenue from Two Family Multifamily and Commercial General to Two Family Multifamily. This is from earlier this evening. Counselors?
Motion to advance ordinance number 3557.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance the ordinance to second read. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3557 is advanced to second reading. On first reading, we have ordinance 3558, an ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending Chapter Two Administration, Article Six Financial Affairs, Division One Generally by amending Section 2-586, sale of surplus, obsolete, et cetera, the city property by amending the notice requirement to allow for notice on the City of Stillwater website for disposition of surplus or obsolete property, repealing all ordinances to the contrary and providing for separability.
This section of the city code sets forth procedure for sale of surplus property. The code currently has a requirement for the mailing of circulars and publishing notice in a newspaper. This recommended change just revises the code requirement to providing notice by posting on the City of Stillwater website at www.stillwaterok.gov.
Very modern of us. Questions, comments, action, Counselors?
Motion to advance ordinance number 3558 to second read.
Second. We have a motion and a second to advance the ordinance. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3558 is advanced to second reading. On first reading, we have ordinance 3559, an ordinance closing a portion of Wright's Way located at north and east of Lot Four, North Gate Commercial Area, first section in Section 25 Township 20 North Range Two East on property addresses 5021 North Perkins Road. This is from earlier this evening as well.
Move to advance ordinance 3559 to second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance the ordinance. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3559 is advanced to second reading. On second reading, we have ordinance 3555, an ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending Chapter 29 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article Two Administration and Enforcement, Division One Generally, Section 29-32, duties of the city manager by specifically allowing the city manager to limit or extend existing established parking time limits and waiving other parking restrictions as deemed necessary during special events, repealing all ordinances to the contrary, providing for separability, and declaring an emergency. Reminder that we'll need two actions on this item to approve it fully.
Motion to adopt ordinance number 3555.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 3555. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that ordinance is adopted. Is there action on the emergency clause?
Motion to declare an emergency.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to declare emergency on 3555. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the emergency clause for ordinance 3555 is also adopted. On second read, we have ordinance 3556, an ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending Chapter 33 Parks, Events, and Recreation, Article One in General, Section 33-15 Camping Prohibited, exceptions by specifically allowing the city manager authority to grant overnight camping in city parks and public areas during special events, repealing all ordinances to the contrary and providing for separability, and declaring an emergency. Counselors?
Move adoption of ordinance 3556.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that ordinance is adopted. Is there action on the emergency clause?
I move to declare an emergency relative to 3556.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause. Please vote. Vote. A lot of talking. With a vote of five to zero, the emergency clause of ordinance 3556 is adopted. Takes us to item nine, reports from officers and the board. Ms. Carnley?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Moore?
Yes, just want to remind you that to save the date for our annual Household Hazardous Waste Event, so the spring event's coming up on Saturday, April 26th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Convenience Collection Center located at 807 South Perkins Road. I took advantage of this last fall and had quite a few things after our move and remodel, and it's a great service that our waste management team provides. So this event offers residents the opportunity to dispose of oil-based paints, pesticides, herbicides, lawn care products, pool chemicals, craft and hobby supplies, mixed fuels, and pharmaceuticals for free. Please know the Convenience Collection Center will be open for business as usual to receive other items. For additional information, go to stillwaterok.gov/HHW. Getting efficient there.
Yeah.
HHW.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Zeloski?
Yes, if you are looking for an environmentally friendly way to save money on your water bill, you may want to purchase a rain barrel through the City of Stillwater. These barrels capture water from your roof and store it for future use. Using rain barrels also helps to reduce stormwater pollution by minimizing the amount of stormwater runoff that leaves the site. Online orders are due by April 28th at https/floor/upcycle-products.com/okay-programmes/stillwater. For more information...
Go to the website, look for the link.
We tried to jump ahead to the 20th century there.
For more information, maybe a better way, please contact Zach Henson by email at zach.henson@stillwaterok.gov or by phone at 405-533-8436.
Does anybody need to hear the website again?
Absolutely.
Counselor Hawkins?
The city is accepting applications for various committees, including the Board of Drainage Appeals, Building Trades Board, and more. Committees are essential for increased development and infrastructure projects within our community. If you would like to get involved in local government and help make Stillwater even greater, please consider serving on one or more of these committees. For more information or to apply, go to stillwaterok.gov/citizenboards. And I would say I'm always grateful for the people that will volunteer to serve on these types of boards, and for people who are constantly asking, how can I get involved in local government? This is a great way.
Absolutely.
And thank you for the very good link.
Counselor Clark?
We really, really, really want to invite you to join us for the Parks Open House on Thursday, February 27th, this Thursday, beginning at 5:30 p.m. at the Stillwater Community Center in Room 121 in the main entryway area. This is the third date we've had this scheduled because of severe weather, so we really mean it this time. City counselors and staff look forward to hearing your suggestions, concerns, and ideas about Stillwater Parks, community spaces, and facilities. We want to ensure our parks and public spaces meet the needs of our residents and families. There will be sign-ups for volunteer opportunities. We plan to share information collected from recent park surveys. For more information, go to stillwaterok.gov/parks.
Everyone's going to be much more in the mood to talk about parks after the weather this week.
I think so.
It's going to be a great turnout. Counselor Harden?
The annual Trash Off Event to keep Stillwater beautiful will be Saturday, March 29th, from 9:00 a.m. until noon. Volunteers will meet at Couch Park Pavilion at 1270 East Alcott Drive. Since work gloves, safety vests, and trash bags will be provided, we ask volunteers to RSVP by March 27th by calling 405, copy this dinner, by 405-533-8482, or email chrisfranks@chris.frankstillwaterok.gov. This is an opportunity to earn community service hours if you need it. For more information, go to stillwaterok.gov/trashoff.
Always a great event. I will let you know that the annual Mid-South Endurance Festival and additional events will be Thursday, March 13th, beginning at 3:00 through Sunday, March 16th. We're excited to welcome all of our Mid-South visitors and friends and wish the best of luck to all the participants, who are all crazy people. These are very long bike rides and runs that they do around the county roads here around Stillwater. Please know that there will be road closures in various areas of town and throughout the county during the race, and traffic may be congested at times. We ask that everyone allow additional travel time and keep an eye out for cyclists, runners, and walkers in or near roadways. We hope that everyone has a fun-filled, safe weekend celebrating hard challenges and the beauty of Oklahoma dirt roads. For a schedule of events, go to midsouthgravel.com. Additional information, including road closures, will be shared on the city's social media. You can go find a list of our accounts at stillwaterok.gov/contact. I also just want to throw in a quick thanks to all of our staff for the last week. Pretty tough times for waste management and public safety and folks that happen to be out and around, and I'm sure our public works crews and water folks dealing with all the stuff that they just have to deal with on a normal day when it's 10 degrees outside and cold and rainy and snowy. We really appreciate the work that you all do to keep our community up and running. Thanks for that. Any further questions or inquiries? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater City Council will now be adjourned. At this time, I'll call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for February 24th, 2025. Trustees, questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
Move a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. There's nothing else on this agenda tonight. Any reports? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn SUA. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned. At this time, I'll call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting for February 24th, 2025. Trustees, questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve consent docket?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. Consent docket's approved with a vote of five to zero. Any reports? Any motions to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn SEDA. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Economic Development Authority is now adjourned, and that concludes our meetings for this evening. and that concludes our meetings for this evening.